Good morning, everybody. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning, everybody. What a great turnout we've had this morning. First thing on the agenda is our proclamation for National Preparedness Month. And it's nice that you all can be here. It means we don't have a bunch of emergencies going on because you're all here. So it's fantastic. So we're celebrating National Preparedness Month by recognizing Douglas County's commitment to build a safer, more resilient community. Emergency response planning, public safety education. Douglas County has taken proactive steps to ensure residents are prepared for whatever challenges may come. Please join us as we highlight the people and programs and partnerships that make preparedness a priority all year long. So I'm gonna first have Commissioner Boyce read our proclamation. We're gonna present some certificates to some of the groups that are here. We will be doing some photographs. Please be patient with that. And it works quicker if you just come up when you're asked to because they'll make us come up and get all together anyway. And then we'll have a few folks speak about the work that their organization does. And again, we're so thankful and grateful for the work that everybody in the room here does on a regular basis. So with that, I'll see if Commissioner Boyce would read the proclamation for us.
Sure. Before I do, I want to say, you mentioned this briefly, but it is the first of September and folks who normally would be out fighting fires across the landscape are in the room today. And I'm grateful for that. So we've been blessed this year in fire season. And for those of you who normally would be out there doing that work, we're happy that you're here today. So this is a proclamation for National Preparedness Month in Douglas County, which is in September this year. Whereas Douglas County has endured more than our fair share of disasters and emergencies, this year nature unleashed widespread flooding across our county. Most of us also remember several significant events in our county's history. The 1959 Roseburg blast that devastated downtown Roseburg, 2019 Snowmageddon, the severe winter storm that caused widespread disruption, 2020's Archie Creek Fire, the most destructive wildfire in Douglas County's history. And whereas we're all too familiar that disasters and emergencies can strike anytime, anywhere without warning, threatening lives, property, and the well-being of our communities. And whereas we know that preparedness is a shared responsibility that requires the active involvement of individuals, families, businesses, and local government to ensure that our communities are ready to respond, to recover from emergencies of all kinds. And whereas National Preparedness Month observed each September serves as a crucial reminder of the importance of being prepared and provides an opportunity for all residents to take steps to improve their personal and community readiness. And whereas the 2025 theme for National Preparedness Month, Take Control in 123, emphasizes simple, actionable steps individuals can take to protect themselves and their loved ones before disaster strikes. And whereas the Douglas County Emergency Management Department, along with local, state, and federal partners, offer public education, outreach, and training to empower and equip residents with the tools and knowledge needed for effective preparedness and response. And whereas we commend the commitment of citizens, community organizations, first responders, and emergency management professionals who work tirelessly to build safer, more resilient communities and work together to ensure that families, neighborhoods, businesses, and the entire community are ready for any emergency. And whereas it is essential that all residents of Douglas County take time during National Preparedness Month to assess their risks, create emergency plans, build supply kits, and stay informed about potential hazards. And whereas we take pride in the citizens, organizations, and agencies represented here today who have stepped forward in support of our shared mission to promote preparedness. And now therefore, we, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as National Preparedness Month in Douglas County and encourages all residents and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a more prepared, safer, and more resilient community.
It's bad enough that my lips want to put extra Ps in that word, but when it's mistyped on here one time, that throws me off. So there's a typo in the last paragraph. It's preparedness.
That would be me.
It's all right. My OCD catches it every time.
All right, so we have a few different organizations and groups here today that all work with our community movement that we wanted to first bring up. Our Douglas County Emergency Management Team, which is Emily Ring and Tyler.
What, what the Commissioners and the best?
Tell us what to do.
Perfect. Everyone sit and smile. Look it up here. Just a couple more. Okay. Right here. Just a couple of my thumbs. Back up. Okay, ready? Perfect, thank you.
If this was reality, you guys would be well from and be following.
Then we will have, don't leave after you come up because we're gonna try to take a group picture with everybody. The next three on our list, Douglas County that work in preparedness. What we have pictured for you guys. I just wanted to recognize you. And is... So let's go with the city. So the city of Roseburg.
Ready? Right up here. Ready? Perfect, thank you.
And our... The city of Reed Sport, I know.
We were just in Reed Sport last night.
Yeah. Right here, ready? Ready? Smile. Perfect, thank you.
Is there any from the city of Southern? About Myrtle Creek? Plandale? Canyonville, I know.
Perfect, so look right here. Smile. Smile. I know, you know me. Click, 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 yes. Smile. There we go. Thank you. You've got to.
From that city of Oakland? Riddle? Don't call it? Oakland, got it. Crudeology. Winston and the Great. Okay, let's move on to local law enforcement. So if you were a member of local law enforcement. Yeah, State Police. One more time. So Oregon State.
Ready? So look right here. Smile. Phone? Smile. Perfect, thank you.
Yep, Sheriff Saunders.
Commissioner Chris moved over. Perfect timing. Okay, right up here. Please. Perfect, thank you.
If the rest is, are there any other law enforcement?
Perfect, thank you.
Now we're gonna move on to fire districts and fire.
I love that they think there's been no fires.
Yeah. Otherwise.
Okay, so look right up here. Ready? Perfect, thank you. Thank you for your sacrifice.
All right, so let's start with some of our rural fire districts.
Can I have one of you on the other side? All right, ready? Right here. Smile. Ready? Look forward. Thank you. Smile. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
North Douglas? And Oakland.
Right up here. Smile. Ready? Smile. There we go. Thank you.
Fire Service, do we have any other rural fire departments here?
Yeah, there we go. Hide in the back.
Trying to hide in the back? Smile. Look right up here. Ready? Please. Perfect, thank you.
All right, any other fire-related? Emergency manager, oh yeah.
Smile. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Um, on to any other emergency.
Are there school districts or routes?
Yep, I got one. I got others. Management groups that work with them. So CERT teams and Aries teams.
And Commissioner, before you do this, I'd like to say something.
We're gonna focus folk. I'll call you up if you have.
Well, what it is, you need to be standing here with the CERT team because my understanding is 20 years ago, you went through the CERT program.
I did. I actually don't start the CERT program here.
So we'd like to officially thank Commissioner Freeman for doing that.
Ready? Just look up here. Smile. Ready? Smile. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you guys for what you do.
Okay, had to look this one up. Oregon Department of Human Services Office of Emergency Management.
You guys get the longest name award.
That's right. Right up here. Ready? Everyone does my routine. Smile. All right, thank you.
American Red Cross. Right here.
Ready? Smile. Right up here. Perfect, thank you.
Bud Revitalization.
Here. Ready? Smile. Ready? Smile. Perfect, thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to help with another emergency management, Douglas County Health Network.
It's like, can we block?
That's a thick one, yeah.
Ready? Look right here. My phone. Forward. Smile. Thank you.
Roseburg VA Hospital. CHI Mercy Medical Center.
Right here. Ready? Smile. Ready? Smile. All right, thank you.
Aviva Health. Aviva, yeah.
Right here. Smile. Ready? Smile. All right, thank you.
Unquad Health. Adapt. Okay, we'll move on to our community groups. Thrive Unquad.
Right here. Smile. Ready? Smile. All right, thank you.
All right, then we have Fish Food Country. Peace at Home.
Right up here. Smile. Perfect. Ready? Smile. All right, thank you.
All right, Douglas Cares. State Haven Women's Shelter. Families Engaging and Thriving Together. United Way. Connections Case Manager. Girl Scouts. Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts. UCA. UBDN, Unquad Valley Disabilities Network. Moving on to schools, Roseburg School District.
Okay, ready? Smile. Nice. Okay, ready? Smile. Perfect, thank you.
Unquad Community College. All right, moving on to our churches. Four Square Church. Roseburg Christian Fellowship. And Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints.
Here. Smile. Again, smile. Perfect, thank you.
Hey, I think, did I miss any groups? Oh, you didn't come up with Roseburg?
You did.
I did City of Roseburg. But we could do them again.
In the fire police.
Oh, yeah. All right, so now we need everybody to come up. We're gonna have some people go to the top.
All the folks at the top.
Taller.
What's the definition of taller?
I'll send them my tippy toes.
Everyone wants to go on top, yeah.
Taller, huh?
You've done this before, but we've still did it on the back. Do the best you can.
Is that what it is? They stand on the box right here?
We'll see how. At least do this, we keep their back.
No, you don't.
Center.
Come on, Emily. Center, uh-uh.
My boss isn't telling me I have to.
You ought to be standing really out in front of everybody. We tend to hide behind you during emergencies.
So the key is if you can see my face, the camera can see your face. So make sure you can see me. Um, between Thomas and Marty, I can't see you very clearly.
So Thomas, can we have? Oh, there we go. Does that work or no? I need to reach out later.
It'll be fine.
Everyone, that's a little better. Okay, okay. Get out of the way. So I'm gonna do my phone and it will do wider shots too. I'm gonna start with this.
Zooming out.
Okay, so everyone look right up here. Ready? All right, smile.
I think this is one of the biggest skirts we've had, which is just amazing.
All right, so this one's each my phone does white shots. So ready? So look up towards the top of my phone. Smile. Okay.
He's gonna call a few people up, so don't leave just yet.
Part of what emergencies are is everybody.
We try.
Yeah, yeah.
So what a remarkable turnout. And I hope everybody takes a second to note the difference of the organizations that are here and the ones that we announced that weren't able to make it today. During these big emergencies that we have in our community, the amount of folks that come forward to help is incredible. But it's you that are here today and the organizations you represent that take the time to prepare and be ready so you can help others. And some of the, you know, more difficult, we call them once-in-a-lifetime things we've had to deal with here at the county in the last decade sort of demonstrated you don't know what that need is until there is an emergency. And having those relationships and those contacts and people willing to step up is what makes us get through these emergencies as a community and come out the other end stronger. So thank you all for what you do. I am gonna ask a few folks to come up. I'm gonna start with Emily, and I know how much she loves this. She may even have left the room. Emily's our new emergency manager. She walks up. Emily's our new emergency manager, she walks up, I'm gonna give sort of an explanation of, you know, for a long time, we had Wayne Stinson, who was amazing and fantastic at what he did. Wayne's role really was emergency management under the, sort of the old way of doing emergency management through a sheriff's department, and he did some incredible things, we've actually named our new facility after him. But the Board of Commissioners recognized that emergency preparedness and emergency management has evolved. And it's evolved to more of a community role and more of an all-hazards, all-issue type of thing, so Emily came from another county who had already started this role of having its own department as emergency management. And she stepped in here, worked with Wayne, and Wayne was very gracious, sharing as much information as he could in the time they had together, and then from then Emily's just taken off and has really integrated herself into this community, and we're thankful to have her. Would you like to add to that, or is that enough?
That was great. That was great, I wasn't, I wasn't joking. Uh, I feel funny, 'cause I'm... Which way should I, can I do this?
Whatever you want to do.
Okay.
You're the emergency manager, this is your deal.
I wasn't born or raised here, obviously, I came here. Uh, there's a lot to love and admire about Douglas County, and a lot of it is here, in this room, and a lot of it is in the leadership that I work with. I'm just very grateful that there are three county commissioners I can go to individually at any time, they care, they're thoughtful, they're, they're ready to act whenever needed, and I just really value that. I value I have a sheriff's office that is very loving and protective towards their community and cares about their law and their ethics. Grateful for everybody here, because sometimes we're all hands on deck, so anyways, thank you for, for coming.
Thank you for your work. I'm gonna ask the City of Canyonville to come up. I know they were gonna flip a coin to see who gets to come up, they both wanted to come up, but so...
But I'd like to stand here, 'cause like, just...
That's fine.
I was born and raised here in Canyonville, and it's a small town, and I'm very grateful for the support you give from the county commissioners, because we use them as our sheriff's department, as our police department, their building and planning, or building apartment is our building apartment. And as a small town, we need those resources, but the preparedness portion of that, I have, when there was a fire on Canyon Mountain, I was busy trying not to panic, but I called Commissioner Freeman, I said, "Okay, he's not in the city," what, you know, but he walked me through these things, 'cause I was the new mayor, and I wasn't sure. What is my role? And then when the fire at Tiller Canyonville was very happy to assist with whatever they needed up there, it came to food or whatever. And that, that was great, and it's these communities that work together. When we had the big event, the flood, you know, the March 16th big thing, wow, you know, that was a new deal. One thing you left out, though, was that Columbus Day storm, that was huge. It was my 10th birthday, and I will never, ever forget the communities and the things, the preparedness of the people to come together and work in Canyonville. For, from my dad, who was on volunteer fire department, to cutting trees out the road so my school bus could come home. So, it takes all of us to work together, and I wanna thank our city administrator sitting beside me that fought, you know, to stand up and talk too, for all that she does to make Canyonville a great place to live, thank you so much.
Thank you. So, I, I know we keep doing the police and fire for the City of Roseburg under the city, would you like us to wait under the police and fire, or would you like to speak for the city? Oh, we'll wait till police and fire. Am I missing any of the other cities?
Reed Sport.
Reed Sport, I'm sorry, Reed Sport. Come, would you like to say a few words about, Reed Sport's an important partner, you have some unique emergency things that we, we work with you on.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, our area's kinda unique, and recently, when we had a tsunami warning, it was, I was with the Lions, and we were down near the river selling poinsettias, and so we watched all the people go by. We saw the fire department, who was down there ready to put in the blocks to, for the levy, we saw the police department, we saw the emergency vehicles, and, you know, we're not saying we're ready for anything that happens, but I think our community works together to do that, so it's really nice, thank you for mentioning us.
Well, thank you for coming over. So, law enforcement, I see the state police is still here, they're, they're always, you know, kind of, they're back to the law outside to make sure everything's okay, we appreciate it. Thank you for coming today, and thank you for your work.
You're welcome. I'm Jim Andrews, I'm the Roseburg Patrol Lieutenant for Oregon State Police. I grew up in Cottage Grove, weren't raised there, and then spent most of my youth and young adulthood coming down fishing and hunting Douglas County, and so I, I had the opportunity, I, I transferred down here and moved my family down, we live still technically in Roseburg, but the kids go out and Glide, and they're in second and seventh grade, so we've been here a couple of years, and we're making it home.
Thank you for the work you do. City of Roseburg. So, we'll get to fire in a minute, we're doing law enforcement. Yeah. Guys, wearing kind of blue uniforms, you keep messing me up here, so get me straight.
You said city, and I didn't make...
I'm sorry, yeah, we're still in law enforcement.
That's alright. Grateful is the word that comes to mind, right, grateful that we have all these partnerships, grateful that we can leverage these partnerships in times of need, and we do to get the resources we, we need, so all of you are all the piece of the pie that make that happen, that make the, the whole thing work, so, thank you, thanks for your sharing.
So, I'm gonna call up Brad Odell, who's now our undersheriff, but his claim to fame is his Facebook Live during emergencies, and I gotta tell you how amazing that works for getting information out in real time, and, and real important information. And we were talking just yesterday, I had an interview with the News Review about the first hours of the Archie Creek Fire, and I talked about how Brad sort of developed that Facebook Live model out in the parking lot of Glide Fire, 'cause he knew he had to get that information out to the public in real time, and it was life-saving information, and it was amazing, you just set the phone up and went about doing it, and it now has become really the, the gold standard for getting the information out during emergencies. And I kinda tease him, and I think he does so well at it, 'cause he's got good hair.
I knew, I knew, I knew that was coming. Well, commissioners, I just wanna say thank you for the recognition this morning. When I look out across the room, I see a room full of partners. These are individuals and organizations that we've worked with on a number of occasions, and I think that that really is a testament to the community and the resiliency here, where we have partnerships that work, we've tested them, we've tweaked the processes. But again, as I look out through the room, I see just partners from all kinds of different disciplines, organizations, volunteerism, and we could not have emergency preparedness without everyone at the table, and that includes the commissioners as well. Last thing that I wanna say about National Preparedness Month is, we're talking about organizations and the individuals that respond to these, but there's a component of this too, where the community is, is part of that preparedness, and making sure that individuals are prepared and ready for those emergencies, to be self-sufficient for a, for a period of time until resources can get to them, and so this is an opportunity for the community to really work on their preparedness plans, making sure that they're prepared for an emergency of all types, right, we, we experienced flooding earlier this year, we've, we're well-versed in wildfires, but there's a number of types of disasters, and that preparedness level is critically important, and so I just encourage the community to take this as an opportunity to have those discussions with their families. But again, thank you for the recognition, and thank you to all of you for the partnerships, thank you.
I wanna mention, we don't have search and rescue here today, because we have a day just for them, so they certainly are part of, of being prepared and responding to emergencies. Fire districts, let's start out with the DFPA, I, I know Commissioner Boyce talked about the the fire situation, that we don't have, you know, huge major fires going, although they do have a pretty good one going on up in the national forest system. But I think people might be surprised of how many fires the DFPA has been on already this year, and the fact that they're able to get around them and, and they don't become mega fires is nothing short of a miracle, but it doesn't happen out of chance, it happens because of a lot of preparedness, a lot of work, a lot of partnerships, and really, the way they go about sending everything they have to stop the fire when it's as small as they can, so Pat, you wanna say a few words? No? You don't have to. Pat's a little tired, he's been up the last few nights, working on the fire down in South County, which is looking much better than a lot of us assumed it was gonna look, so guys have done an amazing job down there. I see Brian in the back of the room, way in the back of the hall, you wanna come up, Brian? Or Douglas and Oakland? You, you are certainly one of those folks that we rely on for the northern part of the county, and seems like you pop up all over the county, so th- thank you for what you do.
Thank you, it's an honor to serve this community. Makes it really easy, you know, I've worked with several of these organizations, you know, Public Health, you know, during the COVID times. United Way during the UCC shooting. Glide Rev, for the, everything that goes south lately, organization. It's a good community to work for, it's great support from our commissioners. Working with Emily and Tyler, it's just been phenomenal, Public Health. Everything seemed to be coming together, I've been doing this for quite a while, and I don't know that I've seen it to this level in, in my career, and it's nice to see that becoming more supportive of each other and resilient. It's an honor to serve, thank you.
Thank you. Glide Fire, Chip, or one of the folks, still here from Glide Fire, you wanna come forward?
It's kinda like preaching to the choir, I think everybody here has the same settings. Again, first, for the commissioners, thank you very much, not only for the recognition, but for your support and everything going on. I wanna thank Emily and Tyler for an immense change from what we've been able to get from Douglas County to the Glide area, obviously, we have two areas to worry about, one is our district, then the area outside of our district, so the sheriff's office, state police, I think fantastic to work with, when it comes down to things, we really need backup, and need people there, y'all have been there. We truly sincerely appreciate it, Glide Rev has been immense in putting Glide back together, and most people realize that, and if they don't give credit for it, please, which they will. So, at any rate, yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that where we're situated, we appreciate everybody that's coming down in our direction, we need everybody that comes in our direction, and if something really seriously comes up beyond what we've already seen, we're confident on the fact that we know we got some help and we got some backup. And we know that future planning is taking place to make sure that exists, so thank you all.
Roseburg City Fire, have anything to add?
Well, I think everybody has said, you know, everything that's important, and thanked everybody. There really is a testament to the community, when they are put to the test under crisis and under those situations, the planning and the community partners, the relationships they've built over the years, when it's not in those times of need, it really shows. And this community's really done that, and I thank the commissioners for their support and everything that they've done for us. We're the city, but we also help everybody else that's around us, when anybody needs it. And that's really what it's about, is just all, everybody in this room coming together, and it's a community-wide preparedness organization, so it takes the public agencies, the private agencies, the volunteers, and the people in the community to all come together to really raise everybody up, so thank everybody.
Thank you. So, Roseburg City Fire is what got me involved in public service, very long time ago, they came and saved my wife and children at my home when I was out of town, and that's really got me up off the couch, decided that I needed to be, you know, part of the group helping this community, so one of the things I did when I was on Roseburg City Council and council president there was help the group that finally was able to put together the project, built the public safety center that they all work out of now, so thank you guys for the work that you do, it, it's amazing, you know, that people get into the profession of running towards danger instead of away from danger, and certainly, the police and fire and all the folks that are in the room here are part of that, so got a few more groups, I know we, we're running a little bit long, but, so we have sort of the emergency management groups, so the CERT team, you, you said a few words, you wanna say a few words with the camera going?
Commissioner, especially Commissioner Freeman. The Douglas County CERT team, there's actually two teams, one in lower Unquad, and then you have the Central Douglas team. My understanding is Commissioner Freeman is a 20-year member of the CERT team. He mentioned that he helped found the CERT team here in Douglas County. We wanna thank you, and we wanna thank the commissioners. We also wanna thank Emily Ring, she activates the team. These are citizen volunteers that are FEMA-trained, I am a FEMA trainer, and we like to go and provide that opportunity to all citizens at the time of high community need. Your neighbors, your family, and others, is who we help. Also, instead of having to wait for, call it up for areas, and also, I wear a second hat, the Amateur Radio Emergency Services Hat, and I'm the emergency coordinator for that. At the time when your communications needs are there, cell towers go down, etc., we provide amateur radio communications throughout the county, throughout the state, and we can go throughout the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. UHHS, you guys wanna say a few words, tell us a little bit about what you do? Not sure everybody understands the connection, but it's a pretty important connection.
Commissioner, my name's Ed Flick, I'm the Director of the Office of Resilience and Emergency Management, Oregon Department of Human Services. I just wanna say it's an honor to be here, I retired from the Army, went home, here to Oregon, and was the emergency manager in Marion County, and Wayne Stinson was a powerful mentor to me. And I just really appreciate the direction you're going into county, creating the department. Well, what we've done here is a lot what we do in Oregon, we started, our first, my first day in this job was September 8th, 2020. It was a big day across Oregon. We're responsible to support communities with food, water, shelter, family communication, evacuation assistance, and that long-term recovery disaster case management, so we really enjoyed working and supporting Glide Revitalization, open 2020, which will be started, and also in the flooding, and we're just honored to support the, the county and all the partnerships here.
Thank you. Salvation Army?
It's just a privilege to be here, it's a privilege to live, work, and support this community. It's a privilege to work with Emily and Tyler and UPHN and Bloodbath and people.
Glide Revitalization, and in doing so, I wanna remind everybody that they are a long-term recovery organization for the entire county, regardless of their name. We catch a little bit of confusion with the, the name Glide, so...
Um, I thought going first was bad, but I think going towards the end might be the worst part I've ever had to do, so thanks for that. Um, I just wanna thank everybody here. Response is a small portion, it, it ends up taking up everybody's time initially, and then recovery takes forever. Five years past the Archie Creek Fire, we're still working with people that haven't rebuilt, and it just, it's a hard, long process, but everybody that's in the room, as well as people that aren't, contribute to that. The county, state, and federal money have been invaluable in all of this, the county has stepped up again and again to offer support. Being unincorporated like Glide is, we a lot of times feel like we're kinda out there on our own, and that's never been the case through these disasters, because the county, the state, and the federal, as well as all the partners that are in this room. I, again, can't say enough how much it's meant to have all the support and help, and to know that we, all we have to do is pick up a phone, and there's usually... to know that we, all we have to do is pick up a phone, and there's usually more stuff than we can use there at the drop of a hat. So, thank you guys, and keep it up.
Thank you for what you do. So, Douglas Public Health Network, uh, specifically has been doing some preparedness work, uh, with seniors. Uh, I don't, uh, it looks like maybe Teresa's step, oh, you're back there. You want to come and explain a little bit about that? I'm hiding in the back there.
First, I want to say thank you for the recognition and for, um, support and bringing us all together, because I really believe that our partnerships, uh, collectively are what makes us very strong and able to do the work that we do. We have been working for, I think, three years now on, um, emergency preparedness, especially related to seniors, and so our outreach team has done many, many sessions going out, meeting with, uh, different senior organizations, different, uh, community organizations, and doing pop-up, uh, e- events to get, uh, especially s- seniors prepared for whatever, uh, comes their way, and, uh, we are wrapping up that now. We were able to do a lot of work. Thank you to the commissioners for some grant funding that allowed us to do that. Um, and it, I think, has been very successful, successful, so I want to thank you for that.
You guys do an amazing job. Thank you. So, so the folks from Mercy were here. Um, I think every, come on, come on forward while I'm saying this, um, if you'd like. The, the, having, you know, the one hospital here and everything sort of landing in their lap when emergencies happen, I don't think a lot of people appreciate the, uh, amount of work they do to be prepared for those oper, you know, those chances that, that happen, and everybody shows up and it becomes, um, sometimes overwhelming, but you guys spend a lot of time preparing, and, uh, at the end of the day, everybody ends up at your facility, so we, we appreciate the work you do.
Yeah, well, thank you, commissioners, and thank you to all the community partners, and whether you're healthcare, fire, law enforcement, just everybody. Um, thank you also to our partners in Reesport, because I know the hospital there also takes a, a lot of patients as well, and so even though we're not in the same network, we definitely see you as partners too, and, yeah, thank you to the community for keeping us around and letting us serve your needs.
Thank you. Imagine, you know, all the healthcare folks we've listed and all the healthcare providers in the community, when emergencies happen, oftentimes that come, healthcare comes, a need for healthcare, uh, becomes pretty important, so we appreciate all the work they do. Uh, the community groups, uh, I know we have a few of them here. Um, again, having the resources and the connections to call, depending on what the needs are with the community groups, uh, is, is pretty extraordinary, and we have a bunch of really good ones here. We've got some in the room and some that, uh, um, that didn't make it today, but are also great partners. Uh, I want to give the school district a chance to say a few words. I think oftentimes people don't understand, uh, how the, uh, how emergencies affect school districts across our county, uh, and the need for them to be prepared for that, because , uh, having those kids, uh, you know, when they're in school, they're separated from their, their parents, it becomes pretty crucial to have plans in place and be prepared to not only make sure the kids are safe, but to figure out how to make that reconnection. So, if you'd say a few words, please?
Yeah, you bet. I appreciate the opportunity. Um, I think two things come to mind. One is that, uh, we do have a responsibility to, to, um, think about the care of the most important resources in our community, those are kids, and make sure that they're cared for, but I would also, um, and so we work on our ELPs, our emergency plans, our making sure our standard responses are, are, are good. We've made some improvements there for sure. I think one thing that's important, though, is to, sometimes we think of schools being a little bit insular, like schools do what schools do, but we've been able to, um, I'm just thinking about seismic rehabilitation. We've, uh, been able to work with the state on seismic grants was one example, and, um, put about $20 million in seismic rehab grants. Those buildings will be our community's assets, and for example, in the event of emergency. Um, we do appreciate all of our partnerships, and I would say the school district, um, our primary responsibility is thinking about making sure our kids and, and, uh, families are taken care of, and that is certainly embedded into our community, but we also stand ready to serve in the event of any emergency. Our buildings or your buildings, the upgrades we're able to make do serve our community, and we, we look at that as a, regardless of where you're at, whether it's going Glide or Open or Reesport, doesn't matter, uh, we do stand ready to serve and, and appreciate the partnership, uh, that we get from the commissioners and people in the room, so thank you.
Thank you. And finally, and, and this is not meant to be at the end or, or any lesser value, I think oftentimes people sort of forget the resource that's available through our faith-based community, so, um, w- we are very appreciative of what they bring to the table consistently and offer nothing but the opportunity to help, and we sure appreciate it. You want to say a few words for being, you made it through all this, so?
Yeah. Um, I'm happy to be here. Uh, my name's Wendy Patterson. I'm here with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and while I am the only church that's here, um, we represent a lot of, eh, members of faith-based, faith-based organizations, um, a lot of helping hands that are willing to step up and be volunteers, um, and offer, you know, resources, whether it's, you know, monetary or, or whatnot, but people who are willing to just help in, in lots of, lots of ways. Um, the Church of Jesus Christ offers also lots of preparedness resources historically, you know, to try to get its members to, to be prepared, and I also want to commend the county for having a wonderful publication that's available for all of the people in the county to use those checklists, get ready, right? There's short-term, you know, preparation guides, there's long-term preparation guides. Everyone should use those checklists to get ready and check them on a regular basis. Make sure, make sure everyone's ready. Um, we have a Facebook page that's called Am QI Together. We're trying to get people to use that, and we'll put publication information out there to try to get people to get ready and be prepared, and it's just wonderful to try to, try to get, and get the community involved in being, being prepared, and what we really want to do is just to lend a hand wherever we can, and that's probably, probably what is most important. We also offer classes to help people be financially and emotionally prepared, right? Be, um, in all sorts of ways, spiritually prepared or whatnot, but that's what, that's what it's about, is being, being ready, because you never know when, what it's going to hit, when it's going to hit you and how it's going to hit you. It might be fire, and it might be water, and it might be something else altogether, so it's just being ready when it hits you. So, we're so grateful to be here and to be of support in any way that we can, um, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We're going to wrap up. I'm going to say a few words and see if my fellow commissioners want to comment, but I, I want to start by, again, thanking you all for being here and thanking you all for what the, the work you do every single day in our community. I, I do want to thank the citizens of Douglas County. I, I've learned this a long time ago. The first first responders are, are the citizens. They, um, they're there first, they oftentimes help each other, step up in ways that's unbelievable. Uh, to the degree we can help them be more prepared, we're all better off. Uh, the county does, um, support a little bit of that work, but you all do all that, that work consistently too, and, again, we are taught oftentimes in different ways about being prepared first so you can help others, and, and the, I heard this at some training I was at, uh, we're taught this when we get on the airplane. Put your own mask on first. Make sure you're situated at home so you're set, so you can go help others, and, uh, I think that is an important message that we need to get out, uh, to the public consistently. Uh, there's only so many resources all of us in government can bring to bear in these big emergencies. People need to try to do the best they can to take care of themselves until help can get there, so, again, thank you all for the work you're doing. Commissioner Cross, have you got a?
Sure, I'd just, just be brief to say, you know, I, I really appreciate you all. I really gotten to appreciate, you know, and grateful that I got to meet most of you over the last few years and different things, seeing how you work and the, the, you know, uh, fantastic jobs you, you do. Uh, I'll say I'm really grateful that I haven't seen you much this summer, so it's been great, you know? And hopefully, we, uh, you know, when, when it is, it's for something like this, and, and, um, I hopefully, but it's sure nice knowing you're there, so thank you.
Thank you. One of the big things that we've worked on, and, and we haven't mentioned, is our ability here at the county to communicate. Tamara and, and her office and the work that they do, um, I'm not going to talk a lot about this, but, uh, Commissioner Boyce and I, when we got here in 2015, nine months into our, uh, time being commissioners, uh, we had a big tragedy at our college, and we quickly discovered, uh, as a county government, we had no ability to communicate with the public. We didn't have a public information officer, we didn't have a newsletter, we didn't have a Facebook page, we had absolutely nothing. The sheriff's department was way ahead of us on that, but as far as the county government, we had none of that. So, from that time to now, you see the information that Tamara and her team are able to put out. You saw that during the, the COVID pandemic, you've seen it during the floods and every other emergency we had. That, that is a, uh, a built asset that we've, that we've put together in a relatively short period of time and, and designed to build capacity. It's the same thing with our emergency management building and having capacity today. FEMA's in town, in that building, working, uh, on flood recovery stuff, so, uh, we've used that building quite a bit, and that's all just building capacity. Each of these emergencies teaches us where we're short in capacity, and we've taken a very proactive role in trying to build that capacity for the next one. Commissioner Boyce?
Sure. It's really been, um, sort of under Commissioner Freeman's leadership, where we recognized early on that the county had a bigger role to play in emergency management than just through the sheriff's department. Uh, when we were thrust into, uh, our first responses to things like the UCC shooting and Snowmageddon, uh, it, it didn't take long to realize that the county had a whole bunch of assets that were available to help and could help, uh, that weren't under the purview of the sheriff's department. So, we had, you know, uh, everything from, um, some equipment and supplies within the parks department, to public works, to the fairgrounds, uh, all that could play a key role that, that we were in charge of. So, it was obvious that, eh, emergency management on a community level needed to be, uh, under the direction of the entire board of commissioners, and the sheriff and Wayne had always done just a great job, but it really needed to be bigger than that, and it was, uh, your idea originally to, to, to move that, and it's been, uh, having Emily come and join us and take the leadership role in that has been fantastic. Uh, Tamara and your department has been a critical role. Um, Brad's famous for his Facebook Live posts, uh, and we do have the ability now, uh, to get information out in real time, uh, and it helps keep all of us moving towards the same goal, uh, and the community responses, you know, when we are, when we find ourselves in those moments, there's never anybody that says no.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing when you call for help and what, what can we do to help? And, and oftentimes people call us out of nowhere saying, hey, I've got this available, and it's a lot of the people in this group. I, I do want to mention, you know, we've talked a couple of times about evolving the emergency management to its own department. Uh, that, that evolving was a partnership that we did, working with the sheriff's department. This isn't, um, you know, you can't do it, we can't do it without the sheriff's department. They're very, uh, integral in our emergency response, and Emily works very closely with, uh, Brad, the sheriff, and the rest of the sheriff's department. So, with that, I'm going to take about a five-minute break and let folks get back to preparing for the next emergency, and thank you all for being here.[1400.28] Go ahead and move on with the agenda. Again, for those that stayed, thank you. The next thing on the agenda is a request for proposal, and this is the Sheriff's Office Jail, Adults in Custody, Food Service. And alls we're going to do here is just read those proposals that we received by name, and then the Sheriff's Office will go through and figure out which one's the most responsive to the request. So, the first one is from Trinity Services Group out of Lorik. And the second one is... All the Customer Care, Memphis, Tennessee.
Summit down there.
I'm sorry. That was just the return address. So, Summit Correctional Services?
Aye.
Maybe? Yeah, that's probably just the tag. Yeah, so we'll go with Summit Correctional Services. That sounds more, anyway, it's on the record. That's all we needed to do today. Moving to agenda item number three, our consent agenda, just a few routine items. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion of second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Crass?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Citizen questions or comments? Anybody online? We've heard a lot from a lot of citizens today, so anybody here in the room like to come forward? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda items. So, the first agenda action item is Planning Department. I'll invite up Joshua Shackley. For a staff report, this is a public hearing.
Good morning. Joshua Shackley, Douglas County Planning Department. Before you this morning is a hearing and order incorporating territory for an owner-initiated annexation of property into the Kellogg Rural Fire District. Property is located at 765 Ray's Lane in Ten Mile. Chief petitioners are Jeff and Cheryl Ingram. The subject property consists of one dwelling on about 47.24 acres and a zone farm forest. Staff has reviewed and found the annexation petition in compliance with Douglas County Plan, Comprehensive Plan, and statewide planning goals, and there are no known objectors in this time.
Questions to staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and invite any comments. Anybody online? Anybody here in the room like to comment on agenda item number five? We're in a public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Pleasure to the board.
Move to approve the annexation of the property and the order incorporating territory.
I'll second.
Motion second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Crass?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Agenda item number six is a Solid Waste Department item. Invite up our Solid Waste Director. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Nick Freisinger, Solid Waste. Item number six is for contract 30002740 between Douglas County and RNH Contractors LLC for services related to the IHB landfill extension project with a term expiring 8/1/26.
Move to approve the contract.
I'll second.
A motion of second. Questions or comments? I know this extension's going to be, or addition's going to be a long process, but things seem to be moving correctly so far?
Yeah, everything's moving forward really well. We've communicated where we're at with DEQ, and they're happy with our progress. We expect to have everything ready to fill that area by winter of this year.
Great. Well, I will tell you, your work has helped us repair our relationship with the DEQ. Thank you for the work that you've done. I know both of the other commissioners have worked as liaisons to Solid Waste and have been part of that too, but I think you bring a unique skill set that helps all that work better.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
We got a motion of second. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Crass?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Agenda item number seven, Solid Waste.
Again, Nick Freisinger, Solid Waste. Item number seven is for contract 30002750 between Douglas County and Black Pearl Paving and Excavation for the effluent force main project. Contract amount is $446,904.35 for the completion date of 12/30 of this year.
Move to approve the contract. I'll second.
A motion of second. Can you briefly explain what this does?
Yeah, this will provide water service up to our current leachate treatment plant, which currently our water service stops at the base of McLean West Avenue. This will also allow us to get a force main from our loadout station for effluent leachate down across the overpass of Highway 5, where it will terminate next to the path there. And that gives us a few options for what we want to do next with that clean effluent.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Crass?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Thank you. Again, thank you for your work. I have one off-agenda item that is time-sensitive, and this is a bargain and sale deed for a small piece of property that we're selling back to a property owner. Sale amount is $470.56, and I'll move to approve the bargain and sale agreement. A motion of second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Crass?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. Agenda item number eight is Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Boyce?
Yes? I don't think so.
Just real quick, we had a chance last night to go over to a birthday party for a community member that's struggling with some illness over in Reesport, and got to see a lot of the Reesport community members. It was actually at the MAC Center over in Winchester Bay. And that community, very close-knit community, to see those people come together and support a longtime community member through some challenging times, was pretty incredible to see. It was well worth the time to drive over and participate in that last night. So, I want to thank my fellow commissioners for making the trip over there too. I think the people of that area appreciated us taking the time to go over there, but I appreciate the, the way they are rallying together behind this gentleman and helping him as he's dealing with his illness. So, can you have anything else before I adjourn the meeting? Thank you all for being here. Meeting adjourned.